I'm here already, so it's great.
The best Madison thing is the sweatpants. They have tiger paws down the leg. They're very cute.
Cool. My kids would love that.
Where'd you get that, Violet?
I got it years ago from Guilford Sporting.
That's still around, but you can get it on the online store too, Diane.
I think the last time I checked, I didn't see it, but I'll have to go back and check.
This was obviously pre-online ordering, because they did all the embroideries for the sweater jackets, or whatever you call those things. I lived there while my kids were in school. Oh, 7:30, I'm done.
Okay, I will, I will call the meeting to order. My name's Craig Cook. I'm the superintendent of Madison Public Schools. I would like to call the Madison Public Schools Board of Education meeting on December 12th to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, ever and. I'm sorry, I had some technical difficulties. Could you hear me?
Yep. On and off. Craig, I think both of our student representatives are stuck in attendees, Eric and Isabel. That's mostly for Wendy.
Wendy, are you able to let them in?
They're all set.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. At this time, I would like to call for nominations for a temporary Board of Education Chair. Do we have any nominations?
So can I, can I, can I raise a point of order only that although the bylaws call for that, we technically have one automatically because of the resignation at the previous meeting. So I think we do not need 2.1 because Galen's the temporary chair, even if he doesn't like that.
Okay, I am comfortable with that ruling. Galen?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so I will turn the meeting over to you.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, this will be, next order of business would be to go ahead and call for a vote in election of the permanent board chair. And do we have any nominations for that?
I would like to nominate Galen Qualley, our temporary chair. Galen is a legacy member of the board, has served on the executive committee for a long time. And I think he would be an amazing chairperson.
Keith, do you have any seconds for that?
I would second that nomination.
I would as well.
All right, thank you, Tom. Any discussion, please? Only compliments, no detractions, no criticism. Seriously, any discussion?
I don't have any discussion, and I will third the second, but just as a note, nominations do not require a second.
Oh, all right. Well, thank you. Thank you, Tom.
Or a third, but we'll take it.
Right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Unfortunately, the ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Galen, congratulations.
Congratulations.
So happy for you, and you're going to be a great leader. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I'd say I have really big shoes to fill in your footsteps, and I think we have a terrific board. And I am so looking forward to drawing out every individual talent and coming together as a team to help the district. Thank you very, very much. All right, next order of business would be to call to nominate for a vice chair, board vice chair.
Nominate Greg.
Don't need a second, although I think we all would universally second it. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Let's call for a vote. All in favor for Greg to be, Greg DeSantis to be.
Aye.
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 Aye. All right, any opposed? All right, the ayes have it. Welcome aboard, Greg. Thank you for carrying me. Thank you in advance for carrying me. Next up, we have nominations for a board secretary. Do I hear any nominations for the board secretary?
I'd like to nominate Emily Rosenthal, Secretary Extraordinaire.
Yes, she'll continue to excel, I hope. Any discussion? All right, all in favor for Emily Rosenthal to be board secretary?
Aye.
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 Opposed? None? Great. Thanks. Thanks, Emily.
You're welcome.
And you're, you're the incumbent coming back to do a great job. But thank you. All right. Now, I do have a question, Wendy and Craig. Were we going to hold off on nominating the CIP members for after committee assignments, or shall we do that tonight?
So Galen, to the best of my knowledge, that's a two-year term, so I think they remain the same.
Okay, okay. Thank you. So if there are any, if I'm mistaken on that, we can revisit it at another meeting, but right now we'll continue to have Katie and myself on the CIP. All right. Next item on the agenda is a call for public participation. Is there anybody in the audience, parents, students, participants, who would have any questions or would like to make any comments? If so, raise your hand, please, and Wendy will pick you up.
We actually have no one this evening, Galen.
All right. Great. Well, I take it that both Isabel and Erica are online now, right?
Yes, they are.
Great. So item four, Board of Education Student Representative Report. Isabel, why don't you take it away?
Yep, I think Eric's going to start us off tonight.
Oh, all right. Great.
Yes, yeah, so trimester two, it's now in full swing. We're in the second third of the year. Even though it's a little gap in between Thanksgiving and Christmas, we've kicked off this trimester. The fall play is being recorded tonight, which is a little bit different than their regular performances. I believe they're recording it tonight, and then they're going to edit it and put it all up a little bit later on. But it's a unique way for, for all of our different groups that are musical groups and performance groups to be able to still perform in the student body and parents to be able to see what's going on without having to have any problems with too many people in a building or too close. So hopefully this kind of even afterwards can continue, and we can still have some recordings that can live on forever and be able to be found afterwards. Also, some, I'm proud to be represented by another person in the senior class. Scott Testori was just one, the National Soccer Player of the Year. So this is like all across the United States, he was the number one soccer player. If a simple way to put it, which is amazing, to think that someone from our small town could be such a great athlete. Great. So we're also very happy that we were all asking about the snow days, what was going on with that? And we were really happy to kind of just after, as we were starting to ask questions, answers were coming in really quickly, just like the email this afternoon from Mr. Cook. Also, I just want to kind of plug my robotics team saying that we have a donation tonight from Mr. Lee. He donated last year. This is the second one. I just want to say, please pass it. It's a, it's a big donation, and we're really grateful to have one coming from him.
Alrighty, so student leadership met once in November at Hand. That's like the small groups made up of the class councils, which are elected members from each grade. It gets kind of confusing. We have lots of different layers here. But there's an elected council in each grade which meets all together to make student leadership. And we met once in November and then once again last week. And we're working on a plan to better incorporate student voices that are less heard. So we kind of realize that sometimes student leadership is a bubble, because we're all very motivated students. We're in the same few classes, and we all know each other really well. And then sometimes there's concerns from other parts of the student body that we're not trying to ignore, we just don't hear about. So we're working on a Google form that will teach people the steps to make recommendations to the administration. And it'll kind of walk people through the process. If you're concerned with something in the English department, here's who you should contact, stuff like that. So I think that'll be really positive, and we're hoping to get it rolled out in mid-January with our next meeting. We've got also lots of things going on at Hand right now. It's kind of exciting, like right before Christmas. So we've got a new program of studies coming out before next year, which should be online and more user-friendly from what I was hearing from Mr. Solitieri. It sounds exciting, because that like manual, the big old book every year is sometimes a little bit like intimidating. Trying to like leaf through when you're worried you're missing something, and it'll be kind of nice, and you can just like search through it. And we're also working on a virtual parent and student orientation for the class of 2025. I can't believe that we're saying that, but okay. So they are over there at Paulson, and they will soon be over here at Hand. And they're working on making something virtual. And we're also trying to work on a virtual club fair and maybe an in-person club fair, depending on how things go in the spring. And for people who don't know, usually when we do the orientation with the incoming eighth graders, incoming ninth graders, we have all of the clubs and sports teams set up a table in the gym or cafeteria and share what they do. So they collect emails from incoming students, and they tell people a little bit about their clubs, which helps get new members into the clubs and help freshmen feel a little more confident when they're coming in, because they already have like a group of friends, or maybe like a club that they've joined, or a sports team that they started practicing with over the summer. So a lot of students really like it, so that should be good. And this is kind of something from my end, another plug, we're gonna have a theme tonight. So I'm in the junior class council, and we're working on a fundraiser, which should be very fun. It's all virtual. Mr. Becker, our culinary arts teacher, will be teaching virtual cooking classes with us. And our proceeds will go to support our prom, which is currently still in the works. But it's going to be a cooking class on January 20th, and after that, we're looking into a painting class with Mr. Del Russo. So we're working on all sorts of different things. That should be very fun and exciting. And overall, we switched back into the hybrid model quite suddenly. Like, we were online three weeks, and then all of a sudden we were back like in the swing of hybrid, which seems a lot more fast-paced, because there's a lot more moving parts trying to get classes streamed and everything. And I thought like there would be a lot more hiccups, and classes would feel like the beginning of the school year, where everything was kind of all disrupted and fragmented, but it all blended back together really well. We got back into the swing of hybrid very quickly. So I think students and teachers have become very versatile, and we're very able to adapt to all of our changing environments. I think that's about it.
Okay, well, thank you. I have to say that Eric and Isabel, I really applaud your initiative and your inclusiveness and your poise, and it's really valuable for us to hear your perspectives and how things are going and the way you adapt, improvise, and overcome. So thank you very, very much. Those are great reports. Next up on the list would be the superintendent's report.
Can I ask a question, Galen?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. We just wanted to discuss. I'm so sorry. Thank you.
That's okay. It sounds like really fun stuff. Isabel was able to share a lot of fun stuff happening for the juniors. Eric, anything fun for the seniors? Any good stuff for the seniors?
So currently, I have not heard anything that is happening in person or virtually for the seniors, sadly. We did have a lot of stuff happen while it was still warm outside, like our picnic. We still are able to have that. I do know that if we do somehow come all in person, that there are plans for us to do another picnic, but all together instead of divided into two groups.
Thank you.
I think for the most part, people are just like crossing their fingers and holding their breath, because Christmas is right around the corner, and everyone is hoping for a snow day. And we're just trying to cobble together this falling apart machine until we can make it to break, and then we will all go take a very long nap.
All right. Any other comments or questions for Isabel or Eric? Okay, I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Cook.
Thank you, Chairman Qualley, and thank you, Isabel and Eric. That was were great reports. I love the piece on student voice and trying to, trying to bring that out more from, from all our students. That's, that's great. So today is, is day seven for me. It's been a great seven days. I'm very appreciative of, you know, central office staff and school staff who've welcomed me and supported me in kind of my entrance. You know, in a difficult time to get out there and meet people, but it's been, it's been excellent. And thank you again to Dr. Jean Anne Pettyfoe for really setting me up for success. She, she worked tirelessly to put the district in a great place, and I'm, I'm very thankful to, to that. And thank you for the board for allowing her to stay last week for a smooth transition. So that was really tremendous. So thank you all. As you've seen, we had a relatively active day yesterday and previously with some COVID cases that are impacting our, our schools. But when we really look at the, the total numbers, you know, I think we're, we are on the low end of districts, you know, our size. And so since September, we've had 47 incidences where a case has been impacted on the student side, and then 10 on our staff side, and that includes all staff. So, you know, when you, when you, when you think about it, it's not, you know, we're not seeing transmission within schools. And, you know, we're, we're proud of that. I think that's, that's consistent throughout the state. But, you know, I think the Madison reopening plan was exceptional, and, you know, I think the, the efforts over the summer and, you know, spring prior really were tremendous in putting us in that place where we're able to, you know, operate our schools safely. As mentioned, you know, we're expecting a pretty big snow event on, on Thursday. This is the first year that we've ever had this opportunity to be able to do distance learning on, you know, on a, on a day where we have snow impacting our, our travel and not able to bring students into, into schools. Decision was made not to do that on certainly our, our first one and potentially other ones as, as well. First one, you know, for, for many reasons, I think we heard from our, our students, a break, you know, is, is always welcomed, especially this time of year. It's been, been a long stretch, and, you know, a distance learning hybrid model. You know, it's a, it's a, it's a challenge. It's a lot of, a lot of work for our, our students. And so, you know, I think that that, that will be a welcome, you know, unless this weather changes pretty significantly, that'll be a welcomed snow day for our, our students and, and staff. And then after that, we would look to run a shortened school day virtually to be able to take advantage of that, that opportunity. I, I would suspect that there would be days going forward that would be a full, full snow day, a traditional snow day, and we would communicate that pretty heavily with our, our population as, as much as possible in, in advance. But, you know, I know there's days where power may be impacted widespread throughout the town or for other reasons where we want to do a, a full snow day. But I think as well, I've heard from some, some families that certainly don't want to see the extension of the 2021 school year any longer than, you know, maybe have to based on, you know, what a, what a challenging year it's been, been so far. And I did want to remind the, the board, or maybe this is, you know, potentially new information. We are able to set the graduation date, you know, without having to plan for those, those snow days now. So we'd look forward to working with the executive committee and bringing that forward with a graduation date recommendation to the board very, very shortly. Big part of the first seven days has been work on the budget. And so, you know, we've done a, a lot of work. I'm not going to take the finance committee's thunder, but we, you know, we've done a lot of work with the administration on that, and, you know, pleased in, in where we are at this point, you know, on the, on the budget. And then as Eric said, just tremendous news for, for Madison and Hand, Hand High School. You know, this is a first in Connecticut ever where, you know, soccer player Scott Testori was named National Player of the Year. There's, there's one of them nationally, and that's just amazing. He's certainly had an amazing career at, at Hand, and he has signed a letter of intent to play at UConn, so we'll be able to follow him pretty closely, you know, as he goes on. And I'm sure has just a tremendous college career. So that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you so much, and I hope, I know this is the first of many successful board meetings that you'll that you'll preside over. Thank you. Are there any board, board member comments, questions?
I just had a question, just to clarify, Dr. Cook, about the snow days. Is it, I hate to use the word hybrid, but, because it's become like a dirty word. But in terms of the snow days where kids will be tuning in remotely, are you saying those will only be partial days, or might they be full days? That was the only question I wanted to clear on.
Yeah, so, you know, I think we are recognizing that, you know, snow days do provide a little bit of relief for students and that we can, in a, in a smart way, you know, we have a very productive day, but we're looking at running about a nine to one schedule. And so students get that chance to sleep in a little bit later, maybe help mom and dad shovel out and then, and then get online and learn, and then have some, you know, time in the afternoon to, you know, enjoy the day as well.
And that counts as a full day that we wouldn't have to make up?
It would, it would count as a full day. We wouldn't have to make up.
Awesome. Best of both. Awesome.
That's what we're trying for. Yeah, that was, that was the discussion.
Okay. Well, we will segue into committee reports. And the first one is the Curriculum and Student Development Committee, and which met last Tuesday, December 8th, from 5:30 to 6:40. All committee members were present, including Greg, Kathy, and myself, Assistant Superintendent Gail Dallin Hench, Superintendent Cook, Dr. Liz Battaglia, and Art Sickle presented on behalf of the administrative, behalf of the district, excuse me. We had an extensive discussion concerning connectivity issues with remote learning. And the first question was whether students are able to access and participate in their online education. The committee analyzed data from a variety of sources, not all of which are under district control, but these sources included a survey of all Hand students. I think 709 responded. We took a look at district attendance reports, data for students who are struggling to stay engaged, number of help desk hits for students, the impact of multiple devices or multiple users and household bandwidth, comparison of our district reference groups, A and B districts. We took a look at outage clusters in Madison. Job one was to estimate how many students are affected. It turns out that approximately 76 students or about 8% had internet issues, which caused absence for one or more class periods, and approximately nine were from the same household. And by the way, as always, Gail, you're my safety net, so if I misspeak or forget something critical, please let me know. We could not find a significant difference in terms of grades or attendance. Here in Madison, we have a one-to-one Chromebook policy in the district, I think as do 13 other districts in Dirk, the our reference group. So the, the next question is a very good one, concerned the necessity of using secondary devices in accessing online instruction. And the issue was whether logging on and logging off again causes a disruption and, and disengagement. It seems at times that a secondary, secondary device might be necessary because of the possibility of limited bandwidth or processing power in Chromebooks, although it's really a multi-variable problem. I mean, there are a number of factors. You know, your internet speed, distance from the router, number of users, all those kinds of things. So it's hard to isolate it just with Chromebooks. But I should say that use of secondary, secondary devices, whether it's a laptop or phone, is entirely consistent with our school policy. Art gave a careful, Art Sickle gave a very careful cost benefit analysis of using laptops. No other district in any other district does this. We found out that the cost is prohibitive in terms of money, over $700,000, I think, technical support, resources, and time. Reducing the apps like GoFormative from the school end would result in a poor educational experience for everyone. So we don't have answers, but we're trying to find out how many students are affected. We're trying to make sure that everybody's education is, is the best that, that they can receive. And finally, another question arose about the practical necessity of using secondary devices, whether or not that's unfair for those who cannot afford it. Because all of us here take equal access to education and opportunities very seriously, Dr. Cook, the administration will continue to monitor and identify any students in that situation to make sure that, that everybody's engaged. We, that, so we had a very extensive discussion on that, and we'll open up for questions and comments. But the next item on the agenda was, was very important. It was devoted to suicide prevention and training. Dr. Battaglia outlined the Prevention Intervention and Response Plan for Daniel Hand. She discussed training roles, the QPR strategy, and you're going to test my ability with acronyms here. I think it's question, persuade, and refer. Took a look at risk factors and warning signs. Gail, Liz and her staff have put together, the nurses have put together a great safety plan. It essentially codifies existing procedures, but brings everything together and everyone on the same page, particularly in a virtual environment. It's got a common form documentation procedures. And it's very thorough. So we had one other item we didn't get to. I believe that was K through five distance learning schedules. There are no action items before the board and no recommendations, although we do really continue to monitor the, the, any problems with remote learning as close as we can. So that's, that's the end of the report. Are there any questions, comments? I know we had several good questions. Diane, you were there at the, at the committee, and you asked some great questions. So I want to make sure that I, I do justice to the discussion.
I have a question about the multiple device users within a family. Do we offer them hotspots? Or how are we addressing that so that they aren't at a disadvantage? Is there something that we do to help them? Nine-on-one band? That's a lot.
I will defer to, is Art here or Gail? Can you step in and help out on that?
Um, yeah, Art did have hotspots available for students who needed it. For, you know, I, I believe the primary reason was internet access for any student in a household that didn't have it. He did contact and do outreach several times to building administrators. And, you know, as far as we know, that those students have the hotspots. I think your question, though, Violet, was about do we offer a hotspot to families with multiple users? And that has not been the case, as far as I know, in terms of an ongoing practice.
I do know of, of one family that has four children online. They would have been at the same time, and they actually had one of their children switch cohorts.
Oh, okay. So I do want to say, I, I think it's wonderful that we have this information. I'm really pleased with the amount of data collected, and I would like to see that continue as we go on to see if there's any. to see if there's any modifications that need to be made, especially with the internet access for multiple device users within the family. But thank you. That's great.
Um, first of all, I, um, thank you for doing this um, for us. I think it's important information for all of us to have. I'm thrilled to hear it. Sounds like it was not statistically significant that um, you know, the majority of kids are, are having trouble. So that is reassuring. Um, and then that, um, and as we all saw this week, Google, um, you know, it's not ideal. Being at school online is not ideal. Even Google went down this week. So um, there are going to be glitches and there are going to be trouble spots that, that we will have to address. So I'm gra- grateful that um, it sounds like um, that's being worked on in research um, to make it easier for our students. But my question is um, more focused on, on, and this might have been discussed in your committee, um, but um, do students, are students aware of if they're having issues, who to go to, how to get what they need? That's for me the biggest thing. I know kids are great at troubleshooting on their own and oftentimes know more than I do um, a- about technology, but um, if there is a student that's having consistent problems, do they know? Do they go call arts office? Do they go to the principal? Do they go to their teacher? Or do they? Do, I just want to be sure that they know where and how to get that information.
Um, yes, actually that was a question that we asked in the survey that had uh, the seven hundred and nine respondents. We asked them what they do, if they do get kicked off, if they know where to go for help. Um, and it seemed like they did. In addition to that, we looked at the help desk online and we saw that there were, I think it was fifty-one hits during the month of November. And we also had Mr. Salutari put out a notification in his newsletter in November. So students knew how to report that they were disconnected and the different avenues to go through.
Thank you.
So actually I asked my daughter the same question. Um, because usually she, if there was um, a question of who do I go to for X, Y, Z, she would have the answer and she did not have the answer. Um, and she does know that if she has trouble connecting, she knows to send an email to her teacher. She knows she can try to text a, a student in the class. Um, and we know that we're supposed to call the um, attendance line if it's a, a continuing um, connection problem. But when I asked her, do you know who to go to if you have technology problems with your um, Chromebook itself? If you think that your Chromebook needs attention? And she said, I'm not really sure. She's like, we used to go to the library. Um, and they would direct us who to go to from there, but she said now that, you know, most of the time she's remote. Um, and when you're in person, it's not like you're able to wander the building um, freely like you did before. And so I, I would tend to think that if um, if she didn't have the answer and I don't have the answer, then I would, I would guess that most of the Hand students do not have the answer.
So we can make sure that that's clarified. Um, you know, with students, we could send out some communication on, on that. I know, I know in talking to Mr. Salutari, um, he had a lot of procedures in place. They all seemed to me very student friendly in terms of, like you said, with the, the attendance piece, you know, if you get knocked offline, you have plenty of time because obviously if you're offline, you can't notify your teacher, but there, he set up to ten days where you, you know, family can notify the office. So um, I know he's given a lot of thought to those items, so I can make sure that um, in an upcoming student communications, we can be very clear in terms of who to go to for, for what.
I can chime in a little bit on that. Um, this past week, Mr. Salutari sent out an email to teachers and every one of my teachers posted in like the stream in our Google classrooms, the first thing that you see. Like if you have problems with your Chromebook, email this person or tell me and I will email them for you. I don't know if that was done across the board, but that was all of my classes.
Okay, any other questions? All right, um, moving ahead along, um, Communications Committee. Do we have anything to report?
Yes, thank you. Uh, the Communications Committee met last Tuesday, December eighth via Zoom. Present were me and Greg DeSantis, along with Dr. Cook and Zoe Rude, our communication specialist. We began by just sort of giving Dr. Cook an overview of the role of the committee and the goals of the Communications Committee as established and what we've been working on. Zoe gave us some updates on her work as of late. As no one will be surprised, it's been largely crisis communications, really focused on quick communications as needed. She is hoping to do more of the school stories that we'd started in the past, giving community members a glimpse of what's happening in our schools, especially since so many parents and guests can't go in the schools anymore and have a sense of what's happening. She reported that the social media channels are doing well. The district hand and pulse and pages are growing. Um, as Dr. Cook mentioned, we continue to promote the district app as a tool to get more information to community members and definitely more that the district app can be doing. Dr. Cook has a new Twitter account, so upping his followers on there. We're working on that. That's a good way to get news out too. We discussed upcoming priorities for the Communications Committee and the district as a whole. Primarily focused on the budget, CIP and buildings. Dr. Cook discussed outreach regarding the budget in particular, notifying, noting how the budget documents are expansive, thorough. There's a lot of numbers. There's a lot of details in there. And while those are all, of course, exceptionally important, um, he suggested it might be nice to have a little more of a narrative overview of those budget documents to help folks get a glimpse of them. Whether that's a letter from the superintendent explaining the goals of the budget, sort of what a yes vote means, what that brings to our schools and to our district. Highlighting some items showing how we are moving things forward, especially um, how we've been working within this unique climate. We also talked about using that same approach with the CIP to sort of provide a more overview, executive summary, so that folks can get a better grasp of that. We continued to talk about looking ahead to a possible building referendum, thinking about um, what a new potential timeline would be so that we can start planning ahead. We also discussed ways for Dr. Cook to continue to meet community members. Ideas that we discussed included being present at school drop-off times, as so many children are being driven to school right now. Uh, he will be meeting with PTO leadership, being present at school PTO meetings, faculty meetings, walking through the schools and making visits. Uh, we talked about possibly stopping by at school recess times as well, when there's a lot of kids out there playing. Um, and then finally, we just talked about thinking how the board does its work, the structure of the committees. Knowing that the work of our committees and the work of our board really fluctuates over time as different priorities come into play, whether that's the referendum for the buildings or around COVID and communications. And that is the extent of our Communications Committee meeting unless Greg wants to pop in anything that I might have missed. He's shaking his head. Any questions or comments from the board?
That was quite a list. You really covered the horizon.
Well, you, you set a high bar, Galen. I want to try to keep up with curriculum. Thank you. End of report.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Emily. Um, Facilities Committee, Tom, do we have anything to report there?
No, I'm going to lower the bar, Galen, and we have a report. Um, facilities will meet on uh, January fifth and report.
Thank you. Uh, we're playing limbo here. All right, uh, and the Finance Committee, um, I know it met today. Happy, um, are you online and able to give a report?
I am. I was listening. I was online the whole time. I was just on my, on my phone before, but now I was, I just arrived. Um, so the Finance Committee met this evening. Um, this was our first meeting with Dr. Cook leading us, which was a nice um, way to kick off budget season. The, we had a sort of ambitious agenda, which we didn't get through, but it's okay because we got a lot of good discussion around the current budget. The administrative team met today and so we got an update on their uh, retreat um, and sort of the philosophy, understanding and accepting that we're in this pandemic year and really approaching the budget from that perspective. Three main um, issues that they were addressing were academic concerns resulting from the pandemic um, and making sure that kids are where they're supposed to be, um, technology needs as well as school security. We had uh, faculty members and staff take us, not faculty, staff, take us through um, the four positions that the, this current budget at the state is requesting, their four new positions. As well as the special ed um, increase in budget. So overall, what we're looking at right now is a um, all-in one point nine four percent increase that we're going to be bringing to the budget workshops. That includes debt service, um, which we talked about briefly at the end. I just mentioned that that's something we might want to look at changing that we spend into that every year rather than passing that savings back to the town. And we also talked a little bit about what the Board of Finance is doing for the town as a whole. And how they're, they're not really looking at new positions or anything. So the, these are all discussions we decided kind of as a committee that we'd bring, bring the budget to our workshops so that we can address the budget as a board, rather than trying to do that work in committee. A couple of things actually though, that were on the agenda that we did not get to were the food service budget deficit update, which will, I'm, I think I'll probably just request Art to give us an update by writing, in writing. I think I mentioned it to all of you the last time, but food services have, has a pretty significant deficit that they're running and it's a monthly. I think it's kind of growing month by month. Um, so I just want to make sure we're mindful of that in case we don't find ourselves in some point at the end of the year where we're all of a sudden needing to ask the town for a special appropriation or something else. I want everybody just to be aware of it, that it's going on as it's coming. So we can plan ahead for it and also think about what, if there's anything we need to plan for, for next year.
Thank you. I was, I'm so glad you gave that. I was petrified trying to remember, recite these things from memory and I could not have done it. Thanks, thanks Happy. Any, um, are there any questions um, or discussions about the budget?
I have a question.
Yeah.
You give us the um, the positions, the four new positions that were discussed?
Sure. They are, um, a tech support specialist, um, a math interventionist, Madison Intervention Academy, which isn't really a, a position. It's more of a program, I guess. And then there's also um, the um, SAT weekend and after-school course. Um, I will, actually Stacy, I haven't checked my email because I just got back to my house, but I will, she's sending me the line item budget and I will send that to all of you so that you guys can see. That's exactly what's in there.
Okay, so.
I did just send that to you, Happy.
Oh, you did send it? Thanks, Stacy.
So perhaps I will just add that these were all requests, if I recall, that were um, that came in through last year as well.
That is my understanding.
At least a few, yes.
Okay, we didn't approve them the last year. Okay, thank you.
Violet, were you looking for specific?
The Intervention Academy was not from last year.
What's the Intervention Academy again? Can, is that?
It's a, it's a program to respond to any um, concerns uh, from students who have experienced struggles in distance learning or in uh, hybrid learning.
So this is, this is based on our COVID kinds of learning, remote and hybrid. You're saying this is regression? COVID regression?
To take a look at, yeah, it's another intervention that we're looking at for this year.
Um, Gail, one thing I did, I wasn't here for the whole first round of COVID financing, but are programs like that eligible for reimbursement? Or is it only physical, like PPE things? From the state?
I, I'm going to look to Stacy, uh, but I don't believe that we have any uh, further funds available for that uh, particular CARES Act funding. We're not expecting any further funds.
Yeah, fortunately, we exhausted all of our funds. There is rumor on the street that there will be additional funds, but at this point, that's an unknown.
All right, any further questions?
I just wanted to ask Violet, um, were you looking for exact numbers on those um, positions from the Finance Committee?
No, I don't need them. I, last year we did turn them down.
Nevertheless, I will send them to you. You will have exact numbers.
Yeah, yeah, it's provided by Stacy and Happy.
We'll, we'll make sure you get those, just to, to clarify the latter to uh, um, our, our programs that would be additional time for staff to, to work. They're not an additional FD. It's uh, only the first two, the um, technology and the math interventionists would be a, an additional FD. And there is a, there is a reduction of FD at the, at the high school expected based on enrollment.
So, so let me see if I understand this. So the SAT weekend after school is just a comped position, right?
It, it's um, it's funding for hourly, hourly rate for teachers, um, supervision, um, even custodial time to, to cover the schools if we, if we need to. Really just, you know, additional hourly rate that we've worked out with the, the teachers here. Assuming we have enough teachers to, to prepare that, you know, that, that are interested in doing that.
And would that be equivalent to tutor pay?
Gail, I, I, I would, um, I know that they had worked on something last year and they were ready to, to go. I would imagine it would be around that, that rate, but Gail might know that better than I would.
Um, it's actually uh, higher than tutor pay, but not as high as uh, what Kaplan would provide if we asked them to provide tutors.
I, I do recall these figures, so thank you. That's clarifying.
Well, Violet, stay on board because personnel is next.
Nothing to report.
No, there you go. All right. Excellent. All right. Um, now for the uh, almost the grand finale. Greg with the policy. I hope you take that away, please.
Will do. Um, and we're going to take some steps here to hopefully shrink down the amount of talking we have to do about policies tonight. But um, first let me report that earlier tonight, the Policy Committee met and uh, did three main things. And I'll talk about the first one and, and read a, a portion of the policy. So uh, Shimon and Goodwin notified the administration that there was an adjustment that they were recommending, recommending to a policy that we're looking at for a third reading tonight, uh, eleven sixty possession of deadly weapon based. On their recommendations, they are suggesting that we add the following language. You can find this language again on policy eleven sixty, lines twenty-four through twenty-six. I just want to make sure everyone's aware of it. It is very uh, statutory-like language, so not much excitement here, but it reads, comma, "An inspector of motor vehicles in the Department of Motor Vehicles who is certified under the provisions of section seven dash two-nine-four A to seven dash two-nine-four E, inclusive a United States marshal or deputy marshal." So that's just an insertion of a phrase that I think was inadvertently omitted, or they just noticed needed to be in the policy. So we discussed it as a policy committee. We did not recommend that we delay the third reading tonight. So that is the option of the board to decide whether we will postpone the third reading just for uh, that particular legal phrase. But the Policy Committee unanimously agreed that that um, they, that they would recommend that that would not be necessary. We also discussed uh, which was much more interesting, the school year calendar, um, and had a great discussion about that. Made some uh, preliminary comments and gave some feedback uh, to the administration. And uh, the committee recommended unanimously that the administration bring the calendar to the Board of Ed for consideration and discussion on January fifth. So you have the calendar to look forward to at the beginning of January. And then we just previewed that the Policy Committee will begin its review of the two thousand series of policies. So you may recall uh, with excitement that we are concluding our review of the one thousand series and ready to move on to the two thousand series. Ribbiting action for all to follow along with, but that will be happening uh, at the January meeting as well. We will begin that and thank you as always to Wendy for organizing the many policies that have not necessarily been reviewed. the many policies that have not necessarily been reviewed for many decades. Um, I just want to make a note that we do have these policies, uh, in front of you for a third reading or, uh, for a third reading of a proposed rescission tonight, uh, you can see here we have 1150, 1160, 1170, 41, 18.14, 5200, 1000, 1312, 1316, and 1350. Um, Wendy suggested, and I think Wendy, it may have been inadvertently omitted here, that, uh, and, and so I'm gonna make a motion in a second to amend the agenda, but Wendy suggested that we consider, and I think this is a great suggestion, uh, voting on these policies as a block, and doing that going forward when we have a large block of policies that are pretty straightforward. Anyone could, at, obviously, at any time say that they don't want to do that, and we could pull them and vote on them one by one, but this might save us some words and some time. Um, so let me just ask the question first of the board, is there anyone who would like to consider, uh, any one of these policies or all of these policies individually, rather than as a block tonight?
Right.
Yes.
Um, did you make that, the change of the, the housekeeping change with the letter?
Yep, uh, that, that, that change is gonna be addressed in, um, it's not on, so there's a repetition of the letter C, like A, B, C, D, rather than, uh, D, so Wendy will correct that in the final version. We thought that that, since that was clerical, we just didn't need to amend the agenda, but thank you for pointing that out, Diane.
Um, Greg, I just wanted to point out that Shipman and Goodwin, uh, told me that they actually, um, those two paragraphs are numbered C and not C and D for a reason, the reason being that if a district chose to, um, to insert one paragraph into their policy, um, as opposed to two.
I see.
Um, then it would just be the letter C, so they were giving you the choice of the paragraphs, we are inserting both of them, so that's, that's why initially they both stayed C, but in our case, they will be renumbered to accurately reflect both of them.
Okay, thank you, Wendy.
You're welcome.
All right.
Any, anyone want to jump in? It seems like no, so let me make a motion that we amend the agenda, just because I believe it, again, is inadvertently not here, that we add, um, I think it's gonna be an action item after the two that already exist, so this will be roughly number 12, it's an action item to, uh, approve the policies that are before us for a third reading tonight, and I won't read all the numbers again, but that's my motion.
I hear a second.
Second, Diane.
Thank you.
And again, in discussion, I'll just remind everybody, we're not voting on the policies, we're just voting to amend the agenda, so that we.
Okay.
Can, policies.
Okay, um, any further discussion on whether we should, um, include this in the agenda? Okay, I'm not seeing any, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? I'm sorry, Scott, can't vote now, uh, and, uh, all right, motion carries to add that agenda item.
Thanks, Galen, that's the end of my report.
Okay, thank you, um, all right, uh, Diane, we have, uh, Learn just waiting for you, why don't you go ahead and take?
I do have a Learn report, uh, Learn met on December 10th, um, and again, um, an audio recording of Learn's monthly virtual board meetings will be posted on the Learn website, and the link will be posted in our minutes. Um, the legislative update, um, from the Deputy Director and General Counsel for the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, um, the experienced legislators have returned to guide the Education Committee, a number of bills will be, uh, reduced due to the current virtual environment, more opportunities will be made for public participation, and vaccinations will be a topic to be discussed. The intent is that the teaching staff will be in the group directly following first responders and healthcare workers, a mandate to vaccinate will be decided at the local level, priorities of the next legislative session will be school funding efforts, which have been challenged by the state's current fiscal condition, professional development guidelines, removal of the cap on special education cost, and support of equity work, Black and Latino studies are to be included in district course offerings. The, um, second legislative update, REXs are advocating for increased funding for magnet schools, um. The teacher residency program funding will be requested to increase the number of minority teachers across the state, and through this program, it is expected to increase staff diversity by double the current number. Um, agency update, the Learn's new Director of Human Resources was introduced. Um, staffing shortages at Learn continue, after the first of the year, teachers will be asked to return to in-classroom teaching, there is concern regarding resignations and retirements resulting from this. Then there was a roundtable discussion, um, concerns with the amount of work that will be needed to catch up students on the learning that was lost during the COVID pandemic, discussion followed on how to prepare for the challenge, how do we assist teachers in preparing new models and practices that will assist students towards regaining the momentum needed to achieve their academic proficiencies, proficiencies. Planning needs to begin now with careful consideration towards developing a reasonable process that is equitable to students and teachers alike. End of report.
Okay, thank you very much, um, and, uh, all kidding aside, um, we have our liaison from the Board of Selectmen, Scott Murphy, Scott.
That was an interesting way to start my report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, so Board of Selectmen met on the 14th of the month, uh, just this past Monday, and I am happy to announce that one of your very super excellent math teachers at Daniel Hand High School is now the Madison Youth and Family Services Chairman, Mr. David Buller, so we were excited to, um, to, to get him in there. Um. We recognize Neighbor to Neighbor Organization, uh, uh, associated with the Madison Foundation, who has contributed approximately $67,100 to COVID relief, uh, over the, uh, the past few months, um, incredible, incredible donations, and, um, we read a proclamation in their support, so many of the members were on the Board of Selectmen meeting, which was fantastic. If anybody wants to make a donation to Neighbor to Neighbor in support of COVID relief, uh, locally, um, submit it to PO Box 446. The Board of Selectmen also established a Charter Revision Committee, uh, and we're accepting nominations right now for volunteers, so that is exciting and moving forward, I am personally interviewing, uh, candidates, so I mean, very excited about that. Um, we discussed a tax exemption program for the volunteer fire department, uh, to keep them in, um, sort of in line with what is going on with the state right now, so, uh, we did pass that. Uh, we discussed an early retirement program, um, which is going to provide some interesting reorg opportunities in our town, one of which is potentially the, uh, consideration of merging, merging Beach and Rec and Senior Services. Um, we also discussed the Island Avenue, um, School and some of the, um, potential things that are going on there, obviously with the upcoming, uh, renewal of the lease, as well as the committee is gonna come back and report to us on their findings in January. Uh, we also discussed, uh, the Affordable Housing Plan, uh, and an ad hoc committee that is going to be started in the town of Madison for, um, uh, for an ad hoc committee, we actually have a member from Madison Youth and Family, from Senior Services, uh, and then Aaron will be, Aaron Duquesne will be from the Board of Selectmen there. Lastly, we discussed some land use updates, and, um, there were several that actually were, were insightful, at least for me to learn about, and, and potentially many of you guys as well, but the marina that was all over the newspapers at Four Post Road, I guess the property is now up for sale and is not moving forward at this point. Um, however, a possible marina, um, is up, uh, in January, February, and P and Z on Cottage Road on the opposite side of town, so, um, excited to hear some potential opportunities there. Um. And I, other than our executive session, um, which focused on a, a variety of land use opportunities, that, I believe, is my, eh, my report, so end of report, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, excellent, thank you very much.
Lot going on.
Um, do you have any discussion or questions? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed, um, where the sponsor, is there an audience response to any information presented? All right, hearing none, we will, um, move on to the consent agenda. Um, we have an action item to approve the following policies, um, several with route line, like, like Greg, policy 1150, smoking, policy 1160, possession of a deadly weapon, policy 1170, automatic external defibrillator, uh, policy 41, um, 18.14, Americans with Disabilities Act, section 504, uh, policy 5200, Americans with Disabilities Act, section 504, students, policy 1000, School Community Relations Program, we're gonna, it's a rescission, policy 1312, public complaints, also a rescission, policy 1316, conduct on school property, rescission, and policy 1350, relations with law enforcement officials, rescission, um, and the motion will be, uh, to approve all of those, uh, as a group, as discussed. Um, do we, um, have any discussion, pardon?
So moved?
Thank you very much, Diane.
Slightly off.
Pardon?
Slightly off topic, but was there anything on the consent agenda, or, or were these listed on the consent?
Oh, I'm so sorry, you, thank you, thank you, that's a great point.
Okay.
Uh, no, there was nothing on the consent agenda, this is, thank you very much, yeah, good point, sorry for garbling that. Um, okay, um, so we'll just continue with Diane's motion, do we have a second on, on, uh, adopting these policies as a? Okay, Violet, thank you, um, discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, all opposed? No, no, nobody abstaining, motion carried. Okay, um, so our, uh, next action item, uh, Erica, I hope you're still here, uh, is a motion to approve the $2,500 donation to the Daniel Hand High School Robotics Club by Mr. Leighton Lee.
So moved.
Okay, is that Katie?
Great, yes, with great appreciation, um, this is a great donation, I hope they get back to the robotics floor soon.
Very good, do we have a second?
Second.
That's, thank you. Um, any, yeah, it's a great, a great donation, any discussion?
Just thank you very much.
Yep, absolutely, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, it's unanimous, Eric, all right, all right. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Um, action item, uh, motion to approve the minutes of the December 1st, uh, 2020 Board of Education meeting.
So moved, Katie.
Second, Diane.
Okay, thank you, Diane, uh, discussion? Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries? Next up, any old business that needs to be discussed? All right, future agenda items? Uh, meetings and dates of importance are listed, uh, in the packet, and, uh, before we go, um, I know that, uh, Katie loves to give presents, and, uh, in light of how much she's given of herself to the, uh, district, we have a very small token of appreciation, a small token, but great appreciation for you, Katie, I wish, um, I wish you were here, we'll get it delivered to you, but.
Oh my goodness, so do I! Thank you.
It's a, you, something you really deserve, and, you know, so happy.
Thank you, Galen, and I hope you know I'm here to give whatever support I can, um, to you and the Executive Committee and the, and the whole board, I'm excited about this new chapter, we're off to a great start, Dr. Cook, welcome.
Yes, thank you, all right, um, all right, do we have a, uh, a motion to adjourn? Okay, Katie, all right, have to get that present, uh, second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Tom, uh, any discussion, I hope not, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, opposed? Abstains, motion carries, all right, thank you, I hope you fill up with gaffes, get your snowboards ready.